Thanks, everybody. So I'm opening the Finance Subcommittee meeting for Monday, May 12, 2025. It's a four o'clock meeting because we have a five o'clock meeting on the budget. So we backed this up. I didn't take into consideration that that was gonna make it harder to get here, but for me, it did. But anyway, here we are. So first item is, well, let's see, we have Counselor Walsh is here. From a counselor's standpoint, Counselor Govan is here.
Counselor Delgado.
Yeah, he is blocked.
Okay, and then we have Chris, the Budget Guy. We have Sequoy. We have, thank you.
They didn't go front back.
Can you pitch it so we can see, Jose?
I think so, yes, sir.
You do that, Sequoy. Where's the magic? You want to do that?
I appreciate you, Sequoy.
Thank you, man. Or I could do that. You can be on my tech team anytime. Of course, you'd be on the grants team, too, so. March Revenue versus Expenditure Report. Oh, let me just introduce. So we got the counselors. We got Chris, Sequoy, Kathy Arcapo, Steve Lonergan, from whatever you are now, Comptrollers. Chris Signoli. Great, good group. Who's that in the lower right?
Lindsay.
Lindsay, oh, looking different, okay. Hi. Well, we just saw her head over there.
I was like, looking different.
Yeah, she looked different from the other one.
Before, I was a little bit from wherever he is, but I got a.
For me, Steve, that not being crazy.
I would like to, yes.
Thank you. And after you do that, could you do the March Revenue versus Expenditure Report?
The March Revenue Expenditure Report is through three quarters of the year. We are exactly seventy-five percent of our budgeted revenue, and at seventy-three percent of the budgeted expenditures. So there's nothing on the horizon I see as a problem right now. I will be sure to let you know when there is.
I mean, you can tell Pat Burns, if you were talking with him, he never hit seventy-five percent.
I did tell him that already.
He was always good, but seventy-five percent.
It's not being precise.
Not being precise. Anybody have any questions on that? Is there any, there's nothing you see concerning?
Nothing right now, no.
Okay. Item number two, thanks, Steve. Item number two, donations to Elder Affairs. One, $220?
That'll be me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a $220 donation from various individuals. The donations include a Speed Brew GRX 10 coffee maker, a West End electrical coffee pot, and a Build 'Em Up Fitness donation.
Were these specific? Whoever gave the money wanted to buy those specific things?
I believe they gave them those things. What a dollar amount value.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's a good one. Good report, Sequoy. Anybody questions on that?
What kind of coffee?
Hopefully, you can choose.
Item number three. Order number ID 8616, whatever, firefighter safety equipment round two grant. Is that also you, Sequoy?
This is me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is round two of our FY25 firefighter safety equipment grant. In the first round, we received $35,000, and this is an additional $7,200 that they gave us. So this is money we're going towards an electrical vehicle emergency plug, patient lifting device, ropes, ice rescue board, and rapid deployment craft, lifting airbag, rescue saw, and chainsaw. So anything that we weren't able to cover in the first round is $7,200. We're going towards that. And we have until June 30, 2025, to spend that funding.
All right. And you've already got the coffee maker, so you have your name for it.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
An electric, electrical vehicle? What's the total cost? Because it's gotta be more than $7,000.
Oh, 100%. So the $35,000 in round one supported all these items as well, so.
Okay, so this is kind of.
Exactly. That's left what we use $7,200 for.
I figured electric vehicles, a little more than that.
Yeah, this day and age, we wouldn't be able to buy much with $7,200.
Exactly the price of the car I drive. Three years ago. Hello, Stephen Howard. Well, okay, welcome, Stephen. Item number four, Nacho. Oh, my God, that's like.
Nacho goes with the coffee.
What's the joke that my grand son comes up with? Nacho cheese. You know that joke?
We were actually talking about that earlier. We were gonna say the joke, but we left it to you.
You're catching me. I mean, it was a final today at eight to 10 in my, one of my classes, the last class I had to do. And I sang to my students a couple times. So I am, I'm on the edge. I sang to them.
Wait, so you emptied out the room?
They're on their way anyway.
Did you sing to us?
I'd be happy to. It was like, we gotta get through the agenda for it.
So, yeah, this is a $10,000 grant from Nacho, which stands for the National Association of County and City Health Officials. And the purpose of this grant is to support emergency preparedness here in the city. So the department intends to use the funds for the Medical Reserve Corps, which is a community-based civilian volunteer program that works to address the wider range of challenges from public health education to disaster response.
Very good. I'm gonna go through this agenda, and then I'm gonna ask, if you don't mind, a question of you later, once we get through the agenda. Not, it's not off the wall. It's just about air pollution and all that stuff. Any questions on nacho cheese?
Do you have any?
I wish I remembered a question, you know, nacho cheese is the punchline. Okay, item five. Fiscal Year 25 Safe and Senior Safe Grant.
So that one will be me as well, Mr. Chair. Thank you. So this is the FY25 Student Awareness and Senior Safe Grant. So this is a grant that we receive every year. And the program is aimed to educate students and seniors on fire prevention, general home safety, and how to be prepared in the event of a fire. And the funding will be used to purchase materials as well as overtime costs associated with running the program.
Sounds good. And like, who gets that grant? Who does the work for that?
Our Fire Department.
All right, that's great. All right, we're almost getting through this agenda, except the big item is coming. Chris Signoli to tell us all about the merged city vehicles line or whatever. So free cash to citywide vehicles. Is that your item, Kathy, or is that Chris?
We, uh, we are going to put in a bond authorization, and unfortunately, the advertising got mixed up. So in June, we'll be putting a bond authorization in front of you for approval for 3.3 million in a bond. But right now, we're asking for a million in free cash in order for Chris to buy some of the smaller vehicles or order them. And then in June, we'll come for the 3.3 million. His, his complete ask was 4.3. But I think what Chris is gonna tell you is what he's been working with you on is, Counselor, is merging the police, fire, and city vehicles. So I'll let Chris speak to that.
I'd be happy to hear about that, because after a year, it seems like people come in at different times, different groups for different vehicles, and this is, sounds like good news.
Yep. Once, once we get this, as Kathy mentioned, we're gonna be putting in an order for $4.3 million worth of vehicles. That ends up being 37 vehicles for seven different departments, and it includes big stuff and small stuff, but we do have a lot of small stuff in there as well. The five-year master plan we did back in February of '24. The vehicles that we're ordering are part of the fiscal year 25 order that we're gonna put in. As soon as we put this order in, I have already met with police and I've already met with fire. As soon as we get this order in, we're gonna be putting together a new five-year plan that will include vehicles from police and fire as well as DPW, that includes every other entity in the city, to be able to have a comprehensive plan, because as Kathy mentioned, I, you know, I was dealing with her last year on about $5 million worth of purchase. Police came in and had a little bit over a million. Police is gonna have the same thing. So this way, you'll have a comprehensive report that we will be starting as soon as we make all of these orders. And as I said, I've already met with police and fire, so when we get that master plan complete, we can share with everybody. It'll probably only take, you know, a couple, couple months, couple, three months tops, to get that together, because we already have a pretty good layout of all of the city, all of the city stuff, and I have a pretty good setup on the police side as well. I can access all their information, so I think we'll be pretty good for that. But this first million dollars will allow us to get going with purchase of a number of vehicles this month, and then, what is it, June 2nd, I believe, is the next date. So as Kathy mentioned, there will be a bond order on there for about 3.3 million.
And that's our first regular meeting in June?
Yeah.
So, I mean, this year, the police came before you, and we used 1.5 million in free cash, and then I know the fire, we authorized a bond for about 3.2 million. What I thought, what I, what we think we need, what I feel like we need is a comprehensive plan so that we can spell out to the council what we're gonna need over the next five and 10 years to replace vehicles, and that it isn't all different departments coming at you. You will have one comprehensive plan that can show you exactly what they're going to need over the next five to 10 years in bonding, whether we can do it with free cash and bonding. But it would make more sense to have one plan rather than three different departments coming, coming at you. So Chris is heading that up, and we'll have, once we get this through these orders, he'll come before you and show you the plan once he has it done.
That's great. And I'm assuming that police and fire are totally on board with this?
Yeah, I've already met with, I've already met with police, I've already met with fire to get preliminary lists from them and look at any, you know, just look at their needs and the number of vehicles and what they have. The only weird thing that we're gonna be dealing with is undercover stuff, but those are all off-books. Vehicles, they're, you know, they're not part of purchase, they're not part of anything. But they do end up in the list somewhere, so I just gotta make sure I roll, I get those things out of, out of the lists.
Not be divulged, divulging them is what you mean?
Yeah, because what we have is, is, you know, they all have fobs for fuel. And that system is what we use for tracking vehicles and mileage and all that stuff. So a lot of those vehicles are in there, so I just gotta make sure we weed them out.
Gotcha. I mean, I'll hold back on my question. The Counselor's Catering or Zeta, do you have any questions on this?
Seems like a good idea.
I actually wanted to just say, I guess, commend Kathy for requesting this plan, right? Because it seems like it's a little bit more comprehensive and hopefully cost-effective and savings, you know, for the, for the residents. I'm looking forward to seeing what it's gonna look like in the end, so that we can make sure that we are hopefully saving money for the residents. Thank you, and thank you, Chris, for being a part of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I talked to Kathy about this earlier this afternoon, and and it's great. I mean, I've been here a few years, and you know, you know, different vehicle plans come from different departments, and this is, this is a great step forward. Hopefully, hopefully it'll work well on your end. So, but specifically tonight, you're asking for a million dollars in free cash.
So currently, the balance is, is, no, free cash has $4.8 million balance? And if.
Well, I'll take all 4.8.
No, 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 no.
Come on.
So I'm currently asking for the million, so we'll bring it down to 4.8 million, because Chris will be coming back in front of you because there'll be, there is a snow and ice deficit. So you're gonna get more later on, Chris. He just, we don't have that number yet. He's estimating, what is your estimate right now, Chris?
About 400, a little bit under 400,000.
So I, we will be coming in June to be asking for more free cash for the snow and ice deficit, but I am asking for approval for this one million so we can start ordering. I think the smaller vehicles came, the total was 987,000, so this will allow him to start ordering of smaller vehicles while we wait for the bond to be authorized.
Yeah.
And so of the four, and you said 4.8 is in the free cash now?
Free cash, and then if we approve this million, it'll be 3.8 million.
And do we have land for the other 3.8 million? Some, often there's a list of free, potential free cash.
That was my question to you, Mr. Chair, is just what's the, to Kathy is, what is the other kind of expected cost for the remainder of that balance?
Well, snow and ice deficit.
That's coming from.
Will be coming. Then we also have some emergency projects. I know that there is, the elevators at SciTech may need to be repaired immediately. So I may.
Elevator.
Elevators. So there are, I mean, there's like 20 things I could use, and there's not enough money to use it, so we're trying to figure out what's the best use for this free cash. But right now, I know that DPW vehicles and the snow and ice, the 400,000, which will bring us down to about 3.4 once we do that.
But if it's vehicle money, shouldn't we, some of that vehicle money go to the City Council for like a summer sports car kind of thing?
You, you just need a new car. Your $7,200, $7,500 car is getting too far.
Not this biffiest car, it's pretty cool.
So there's plenty for this. I try to, I try not to commit at all, because something could happen, and we would need that money. So I try to, I mean, given everything at the federal level, who knows what could happen? So, as I know, some of you probably read, of the 47 million of ESSER funds, we've received 41 of them already, so that's a good thing. But I don't want to use it all up right now, because I want to reserve this in case something happens between May and June and July for this money.
Yeah, so six weeks left and seven weeks left.
But then there will be a timeframe during the summer when, if there's an emergency or something happens, when we don't have the new free cash certified that we may need this money.
Okay, well, that's conservative, conservative budgeting.
I like the way you're thinking.
Do you have to keep a certain amount in free cash? You can't like go lower?
Well, I can't go, I mean, I can zero it out.
Yeah.
And if anything happened, we would have to take the money from stabilization reserve, which we did last year, and then we replaced it.
Yeah.
When we've certified free cash. So if there's any expenses that come out between now and when we certify free cash in, what is it, the beginning of November?
Yeah.
Beginning of November. So this 3.8 million has to last then, or I'm taking it out of stabilization reserve, which we did last year for the, some legal settlements.
Yeah.
So, but then we replaced it.
But we have a formula for that. I mean, and we're supposed to have in, in stabilization between five.
Five and 15, and we currently have 7.7, I think, percent in there.
I'll get you on Stephen in a second. Anybody else on, anybody on TV land? Everybody good? Stephen Howard has a question. Go ahead, Stephen.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Stephen Howard, 1104 Wellington Street, Magnette District. How much is the, to you, Mr. Chair, thanks for recognizing me. How much is, will the repairs to the school be? Do you have an estimate?
For the SciTech elevators?
Yeah.
No, I do not right now. We're waiting for the estimates.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Signoli?
Yes.
I would like to invite you to our home for about 10 minutes, so you can sit in my office, so you can feel the vibrations of the traffic, especially those heavy trucks as they go by, how the house vibrates, so you could see the impact that it's having on the buildings in my area. Because today, for example, we didn't know if it was a plane going by or truck going by, because the vibration was so, was so intense. And we really need to have those streets fix it, because Springfield is built on a landfill, and it's mainly sand. So when these heavy trucks come through streets where they have no business being in the first place because they're commercial, and they have no business, no commercial business on our streets, and considering the amount of money that we have to pay in order to keep our homes upgraded, we really, I really like to invite you to the house so you can feel the vibrations when, when these trucks pass by.
Drop, yeah, drop me an email, Steve. You have my email address?
No, but I'll get it.
Uh, Sue, you can get it from Sue. Sue has it.
Okay, well done.
You can get that.
And one more question, and I'll be done. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Okay.
The pullback, the pullback with the $21 million. I think $1 million one way and a $20 million the other way from the administration. How does that impact on the city's budget?
The 20, the EPA grant for 20 million?
Yeah.
It, I mean, there's projects we're not gonna be able to do. They let us draw down the expenses we'd incurred to date, but no projects could move forward, so we're not, we're not out any money, so to speak, but we, it is gonna be fought through the courts to try to, to get those funds back.
Okay, so that's the one where the, where you were told to continue the work?
Continue. Well, no, that was the, you're, there was one pot of money, it was a 20 million, but then there were the ESSER funds that were 46 million. It was a total of 106 million. We're taking from the state of Massachusetts. The city had 47 million, but we've received 41 of the 47, and so we have no reason not to believe that we get, that we're gonna get the other six and change.
Okay, so it's different.
Two different pots of money. Yep.
Okay, and what about the 1 million for ASMA?
The 1 million from ASMA, they're also fighting for. I mean, none of, none of the funds we've incurred costs on that we're gonna have to replace, yes, there was a question, but then the state stepped up. So as of right now, we should be fine as far as covering our costs, and they're fighting it at the, through the courts to re, to get those funds back.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anything else? Looking around the room?
Are you gonna take up these orders?
Counselor, Counselor Allen?
That's not on this agenda.
Counselor Allen, there is, there is one other project that's on the agenda tonight that I just wanted to talk about real quick.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
We have an item on the, two items on the agenda, actually, for construction easements related to a Mass DOT Safe Roots to School project around Rebecca Johnson School. There is a bunch of sidewalk, crosswalk improvements, traffic signal improvements that are being done as part of the project. And, you know, I don't want to say similar to DX, but when we went through the X a number of months back, this is only about $6,000 and a 15 easements on property and no takings, just easements to construct these sidewalks and these crosswalks in the, around Rebecca Johnson School. So we have two orders. We have the order for the takings, and then the order for the financial side. It's only six, as I said, $6,020, but I just wanted to make you aware of it that we're gonna be, it's in front of the council tonight.
Thank you. Well, it's good you did. They're just not on the agenda for this.
Yeah, it's not on this finance agenda, but it's on the council agenda.
Yeah, Catering just pointed them out to me, so usually they're on both places.
Yeah.
That's good. So you're talking about number 13, appropriation order for taking damages?
Yeah, 13 and 14.
Yeah, 13 and 14.
Yeah, there's two votes.
Yeah, is that total of that 13, is that $6,020? Is that?
Yeah, 6,000, all the takings total $6,000, $6,020.
And the reason we're taking is to make better schools, safer routes to school?
Yeah, we're not taking, this is all just construction easements. When the state does sidewalk work, they're required, because it's a state project, not a city project. So the state, when they do a sidewalk or a crosswalk or anything like that, they have to take a, an easement of the property adjacent to it. So all of the notifications for these went out more than a month ago, so everybody's been notified, and I checked with the law department to see if there were any comments, criticisms, complaints, and they hadn't received any. So you know, I don't know if any other counselors have received anything, but I haven't heard of anything. So everybody's been notified ahead of the project.
That's great. So thanks for bringing it up. Sounds like it's something we should talk about here. So Counselor Delgado and Counselor Walsh, members of the Finance Committee, also Counselor Govan, does anybody have questions for Chris on either of those items? Right, not hearing any or seeing any questions?
Love the silence.
But you don't have to ask.
And we've already done the free cash to citywide vehicles item, so, but we haven't voted on it. So these are three things that actually are not just FYI. We did some kind of FYI grant stuff, but these are three actual cash items. So does anybody, Counselor Delgado or Counselor Walsh, do you want to make a motion on these?
I'd like to make a motion that we make a positive recommendation of all the items of the Finance Committee to the full council for approval.
Okay, including these items.
Mr. Chair, if I could, if I could throw in a little bit of a curveball there, I can vote on everything except items three and five. So if you, if Counselor Walsh could rework it to remove three and five, and then you guys can vote that separately.
Okay.
What's three and five?
Three and five are the firefighter safety grant and the safe, senior safe grants.
They were talking about it earlier.
Okay.
When, when Sequoy was talking, they were in his world. And so if you could adjust your, your motion to not include three and five, so Jose can vote on it.
So what I said without three and five?
What you said. Okay, that is what you call a quick interview. Could you, could you make, you know, arguments out of that? Not everything, but three and five. All right, Jose, so there, Counselor Walsh made a motion about all of them except for three and five. So Jose, would you like to?
Second that.
Second that, yep. And, okay, thank you. All in favor of those items?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, great, thank you. Now, Counselor Walsh, you can make an item for three and five, if I'm saying it right, that you and I can vote on, but Counselor Delgado can't, so.
I'll make a motion that we positively port out three and five to the full council for approval.
All right, I second that. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye. Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Counselor Delgado, for cleaning that up, and Counselor Walsh for doing that. Okay, so at five o'clock today, yeah, I'm just gonna keep going here for a sec. So at five o'clock today, we have you presenting a budget to us.
It's almost 5:30, so five o'clock?
It's five o'clock is the budget presentation. 5:30 budget hearing start.
Oh, okay.
So I, I will talk for half an hour.
Okay.
Half an hour?
You're gonna go out and get some coffee.
I did not. I'm talking about the, the, just making sure we got our logistics right.
Yes.
And and then we'll have the 5:30 meeting, and there's a hearing on the first several departments, right? I just want to say, while we're still in the meeting here, that I've worked with Arcapo and, and Steve and Lindsay, you know, for the, over the last two or three months, I haven't met with them that much, but a few times, and done a great job on, on the budget. Budget is challenging, as always. The percentage of increase is always higher than we want it to be. But I just encourage everybody to think about the things we got in that budget. You know, when we vote for these raises, like the police raises a couple weeks ago, you know, it's gotta, money's gotta come from somewhere. And so I've been through this a few times, Catering's been through it a few times. Budget time is hard. I mean, it's, they do a great job of preparing it, but paying for it is another whole thing. And so I'm hoping that tonight we'll have a good discussion on what you, what your thought process was of putting the budget together and what the basic questions are from people here. Does anybody have a question on it? Because once we get in there, it's, it'll be 20 of us, and anybody, is it Counselor Govan? Do you have any question on it here?
No, you know, my only question always is how it's going to impact our residents. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Great. Yeah, that's always my only question. I understand, you know, trying to balance making sure that we have our services and the services that we need with, you know, how it's going to impact our residents' pockets. And as we know, these trying times, uncertain times, actually, it's just a little bit more. And as we know, these trying times, uncertain times, actually, um, it's just a little bit more challenging for. Especially our seniors or, you know, disabled people, veterans, so that's the only thing. But I, I commend the Finance Department always for, you know, um, doing a good job. Mayor for presenting a balanced budget, um, and I just hope that we can continue in that vein. Thank you so much.
Thank you, of course. Um, Counselor Walsh?
No, I, I think it's great that we're preserving all city services, and that we don't have, I mean, I remember, I don't know if you were here. When we had to close the pools, yeah, and, and churches were taking up contributions to keep the pools open. Now, so those, those were nightmare budgets, and so it's good to know that it's balanced and essential city services are gonna be preserved.
Great, thank you. And Counselor Delgado, did you have anything you wanna say?
No, I'll save my comments for the.
Okay, um, so I made my comments complimenting them on what they've done, and, you know, this. Next two, three weeks, I think Counselor Fenton wants us to vote on this, um, by the end of May. Which is like today's meeting, next Monday, then there's another one, I'm not sure the date of.
Wednesday.
Wednesday of next week?
Yep, twenty.
So Monday, and then Monday, Wednesday, and what's the voting?
Tuesday, the twenty seventh, day after Memorial Day.
All right, so that's, you know, it's only two weeks from today, so I'm not saying that, or tomorrow. I'm not saying that's, that we've been rushed into it or anything, but we gotta do good work in that two-week period, so.
So does that mean that you have all the numbers you need from the state?
We go with the governor's budget. Uh, and the, um, most of the time, that's fine, but we have to work with the governors, because no, we will not have the final, um, state numbers.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody, for attending this meeting. I mean, I, I'm gonna just move forward, Stephen, is something really impressing? Okay.
Uh, thank, thanks for giving me the time. Uh, Mr. Signoli?
Yes.
Uh, when I go to, uh, Catherine and McKnight Street. Which is o, over by, uh, Rebecca Johnson School.
Yep.
Uh, when, when folks drop off their children, I noticed that going to the school and after they drop off their children. So that folks just run that stop sign.
People, so Stephen, if I could interrupt, that's not a finance committee, that's an after the meeting call, Chris Signoli item. Um, so thank you for your interest, but, so, um, okay, everybody, thank you, we'll see shortly.
That's what I was just gonna ask you, is the meeting over?
Yeah, the meeting's over.